Alright, welcome to the June 1st meeting of the State Department of Borders. Follow the meeting order. We'll start with the Plague Legion by Supervisor Black. Alright, welcome to the June 1st meeting of the State Department of Borders. Follow the meeting order. We'll start with the Plague Legion by Supervisor Black. I can't be in our motion to acknowledge you get a point. First and second.
Second.
All in favor of the AI? Yeah, moving on to the regular agenda. Number one, A, a disk budget management document has to be appointment budget management and provide action as aired. And I just want to start off noting that I called for this meeting in light of a lot of concerns that were pressed on Friday. You know, looking back at the presentation we had last week, we all have various concerns. We've had concerns from different heads. We heard concerns from the public. And the point today is I think it's to not address concerns, but to invest together. The team makes that we fix the current draft because of the urge of a situation to stack anywhere. And I just want to briefly clarify some process that got us to this point and then get to sort of really the three main issues to us in meeting today through points of consideration. One of them enclosure, and I allude to that. It's just possible that Tony Cole did correct us with that in enclosure and brought up three items of interest. The budget hack, just putting the agenda. I approached Supervisor Velazquez, the two budget members and bros, you know, looking at the situation. We looked, we just sit here, we follow me for Monday on these issues. And so just to clarify again, we all were faced challenge year with transition in the CA position, transition budget office position. These are two key positions typically driver of putting together the recommended budget typically each year. Those staff members all budget in cooperation with heads, present recommend budget to the budgetarians and adjust to the draft budget based on supervisor feedback for adoption and anticipate, you know, issues due to transition. We full the budget hack, sure the board had a direct connect with the asset and the ability to make recommendations on authority, just knowing we were likely seeing financial wind. Of course, we anticipate the alarming nature of what was presented to us, what had been printed to us, which bears still to us, the ad hoc largely flawed. From the beginning of our involvement, consistently throughout the process in these meetings that we had on a regular basis, Supervisor Velazquez and I had required more information, more specific data to explain what is severe and what is irrational anomaly on the side of budget. And every meeting continually repeated this mantra learned early on, you know, the admin facing, the team facing various challenges here, getting a ton of help. I'll know where Campbell came along, brought in by CAO to assist in the process or to open the budget using a prior budget. I alluded to this inflating as baseline for much of work. And as discussed in recent past, the county adopted it's had enormously knowingly inflated due to vague debuting and other factors. It's a concern that needs to ask going forward, but now we have the challenge front of us. Gap has been to tune twenty, thirty million dollars where you're budging much higher than the actual in the end of the year. Starting the prior budget as the baseline, we were starting with believe flawed enough to begin with, especially when eliminates are proposed to it. The steps proposed to eliminate so many issues. The staff through this process, we evolved, we've saw recommendations as that high as we belong. Staff was raising alarm about projections of loss versus revenue. And we all know the process of proposed positions, vintage judging, continuing with higher fees, hiring freeze. And I just, you know, we've been very, very insistent. So it's clear because there's been a lot of this information in the book. Where it came from frankly, we've questioned repeatedly how the general fund escalated those substantial from just three years ago when it was fifty five million dollars, more than all that current draft budget, even taking into account the good raises inflation and other factors. It didn't, doesn't make sense. We questioned the overall number we've challenged staff and staff has been looking very hard to get down to the bottom of, identify, we identified the rational trend. We looked at division by division and I again requested sedated with some data and we started to look at division numbers per jumps for twenty five compared that with the draft budget, the division twenty five, twenty six, half all these cuts were on the table. Almost all the dividend department budgets were going, in most cases were going substantially. And this does not make any sense. So, and we're urged out really continue focusing on bringing into each spending category, half dive into deals and get each line them apparent year by year, maybe even just last year, going back two, four years, to search for the nominees and start processing question those anomalies. We've consistently as an act state that we're, we don't have information, make informed recommendation and ultimately inform decisions. Some of the questions we made would be the following. Overall explanation, I know we're seeing amounts to what we see are a thirty million gap between two four twenty five and two five twenty six with all ten million or so cuts. More detail breakdown of division by division bits, just overall budget, but we really had to dive into the deals again to pinpoint best increases that happened across the board. Go, we seen, we have the auditor office and the auditor office is very positive. And we're all look at the charts in conference room and splitly stressed, we have to focus on, you know, we have these one time ones that have bumped in, projects capital, we have to focus on our division, division budget. We have to look at departments solve, figure out what's going on. We asked for a breakdown of the categories that include consultants at four, three million dollars, a breakdown, what are all these categories? Consultants four point million dollars, contracts at five point million dollars, other charges six million dollars in general. And we get into some of the recommendations here today, I would like us to really dive into all this, dive into division by division number. But one time as well, and these charged consultants contract. We've moved on to request help. We just aren't provided details. And we all heard, well, if we can access some, let us, you know, dive in. And we did receive access to the open system. So somewhat lit down the current budget, that's where I identified that, you know, you compare those twenty twenty five loss predictions to twenty twenty six. It doesn't make sense. All twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six number are all, almost all higher, even after all of the cuts. So we pushed, we consistently, against, we put back against the notion that we still need to make dracon cuts to a specific to positions, the draft budget is showing this enormous explod deficit. We've been very consistent in the meetings. We are not, this, this budget was not for prime time. We'd use as much of this time as possible. We've stated do not feel comfortable sending layoff notices. I repeat, we did not feel comfortable sending layoff notices without knowing bill first. And we've been about that some reductions are likely necessary. We have to be real here, even when look at project numbers for two four, two five as baseline, we're going to have face some risks. It's valid, but the level that's being posed is still a lot of question and I believe we have a lot of work to do. I want it clear, the ad hoc did not compile the layoff list that went Friday, and we had communicated throughout the last several weeks that we did not want the layoff list to go this way. In fact, I saw specific positions on layoff list Friday after learning the list gone. Knew there was a number of options that were being proposed, but we're not involved with put together list, specific list of all the names or positions that now. The hold off on layoff, this is hold off and send a file budget option until this is our preference. And later June, we require our consistent mantra has been, we not want to communicate, that's guy falling, take actions in accordance with this guy falling. We don't confidence in the draft budget, don't necessarily leave this guy's fault. And out these hot discussions, admin consistently expressed that we just identify law in the numbers. But I will say, we were also on the impression that departments were involved with the recognition perspectives and potential layoff if in fact would happen. So the bottom line is, we stand the challenge our stuff has thrust to. This is an enormous chance to come in and to figure this out stream. We want to work together. I think we just, we have to come together as a team, you know, stop the board, department heads, we want to work a team and solve this. So here today, a few commendes that we've got, probably speaking of challenges, a panel of communication departments on the current draft, so that county works as a team finding appropriate solutions within individual division department budgets. As I communicated departments over weekend, department should be instantly involved in the process, more than departments have communicated has happened. We'd like to abide the board direction, provide, have discussion here today, getting down to the bottom of actually to be more benefit to look at, but to provide the supervisor with more access to raw data, not broad division numbers, looking at as lineup data accurate as it can, and to get board consensus that we stop, you know, with discussions about old gov's, new world, ERP, not outcomes, where we just know what to get. So I've been, you know, talked to him since yesterday and he, you know, for me, says, then ERP is really what department's worth. It's all of this accurate database to work with. And I don't have a discussion about what do we take their tabs, supervisors or what do you propose as a demand team to die into that system? That is in fact the best way to do it. And then finally develop a budget management team. We are, we do, we do need to prove some sort of budget this year, whether it's something that refine what we have now or looking at other options. Did we look at status quo of the predicted twenty forty five jet and off of that? And that's there are things that have come, insurance and other things. And then big restrictions off. There's a couple different ways we could do this, but I had to have discuss concerning staffing that we're facing with our leadership that we, that come together as a team and address. So the three, the request more specifically that I would have is provide authorization or supervisors have access to whatever budget system is appropriate and accurate, to get right data, also put off the entire thing, let us add it. We're the decision makers and we need to have more access to information. We are the ones who are being held accountable here and are being held held accountable for something that we don't have the information for. The same thing, the recommendation to, in light of the condition, to direct manage the budget, develop a team. My recommendation would be in talking with supervisor classes, we include the budget officer to whatever, the CEO may available, the for budget, the auditor office, his team, the budget ad hoc, special executive advisor, Ray the nose who has over a gate of experience working with budget. And if there's awareness from specific department has to take, I certainly as supervisor would open to them, a whole phone to mine, just throw out, you know, Tom Slavich, I know the district attorney has shown interest in this. I'm over that conversation to which, you know, pick the whole departments to evolve. So that we can sit down in a room, make a data start with, now this, get out of meeting every week, once, twice a week, one solution at a time, dive in, look at numbers, don't leave until you figure this out thing. So that's what I wanted to say as far as context and the recommendations. You know, there isn't a report go along this, this is an important meeting was called because we needed to hit. And I'll open it up for public content and we'll come up with a number of discussion and direction.
James, please, all right, a speaker card on Zoom, please press and raise your hand. On standby, we have Cisco.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I reached out to HR on Friday when a request came to need a word of layoff notice to member my staff. I basically asked the question by who authority did this happen since we get the Thursday board meeting, the resolution heard from the boards not to adopt recommend possibly to move forward. So I think that's the board direction. I did as well in the plus C and P just for personnel, layoffs have come from board that is yours and you correct CAO. So in the absence board direction, I felt very uncomfortable with the idea I would be forwarding a lot of this, especially since the question that I heard that Thursday, that there was not prepared to go that action. My request to board to be very clear what your forward steps are, if you are meaning for the layoff notices not, provide direction to the CAO office, HR. I know the board taken efforts to show employees that are valuable, they have an employer, she had lunches, other things. I tried it to my turn of saying in that, that the tree remembers what acts get. And we issue layoff notices in case relationships that will develop with our employees, how much more clearly the can door. I understand the budget challenges. I appreciate the, I don't know if it's invitation, the consideration, my participation in the process. I'm not want to be in precedent, I make myself avail for that. I do have to be with board, I don't want to pose itself. I do understand that you're one's honorable to tap air for the caller. I do understand, but as a result, my issue on Friday was that you were aware, the admin this was saying that board, board box rising left notices go out. What I heard over weekend, at least I shouldn't have read on to Facebook postings and other places, that was not the intention of the board. I give you a word of that, and I thought that can be sorted out. The lay offices have gone forward, can delay, since that is what I understand the direct of the board is was intended. Don't know exactly all the specifics. The budget situation is board knows it been completed. First, as depend heads reviewed information related to the Alex on Insta and informed directly to who was. I have my own concerns that an working foot in the process of the act is forced to notice, there is an opportunity to be heard. The amended budget being acted upon is not opposite until after Thursday's meeting. So I don't necessarily think appropriate, she lay notices of that anyways, things discussion. And the recommended budget was fine posted on Friday, so at least having that discussion moving forward. And if you have additional questions for me, it's my main goal and expectation and hope that we lay the left notice at least so we can better go on the budget situation. So from, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. And just clarify, here with the board can be open conversations, public input, everyone commented, be, I think this, to just be a lot of conversation. Thank you.
Thanks.
Prinsel. On standby, we'll have Melinda.
For our supervisors to check, I usually speak on items that involve policy or budgetary out of respect for those that we should play selected officials. Today I want to speak because the events that inspired the last many hours have been really worrying. On Friday at thirty PM, I received a lay notice for one item. There was morning, there was no discussion, there was no chat. And when asked why child can't know, the answer I received was because we need safe money. And when asked how much money you need to save from addition, the answer was we don't. I ask you kind of a minus. Now, for fiscal year twenty twenty six, my budget has lost two vague decisions, one permanent decision, and what I hear perhaps emerged, any preventing employee with ten years also can be laid off. Values forty percent of staff gone dead. Now, appreciate phone call I received various supervisors weekend, but frankly, I'm unsure what or who to believe. At the last meeting, the board said, and I believed it, that we're collaborating to find solutions. I took that as perhaps someone's going to come so I can find additional ways to fund it. What happened to me main twenty to thirty was happened between June seven, our next meeting. Now, I also dealt this week to the but trying to better understand what's going on. This is what I found. The salary for the fire reef ekes through my staff. Half a mile of a row equals exactly four of my staff. And I agree, we are faith different decision, challenging times, but these are just numbers for me. They're not just numbers on preshi, real people, real consequence. Now, the children carry, they are going to have consequences. They already have consequences in my office. Back to having, it's been turmoil, there's discussions, people cry. Forty percent budget is significant. I also bring that there's been a lot of discussions about budgets being really inflated. If look at my budget for example, the current numbers are also two two twenty three. With concealed budget cuts, my budget is going to go in the timeframe of the years, law has changed. There's significant growth in rotation, significant growth in vital records. So questions, how are we continuing to provide those services with cuts? I want to be part of the conversation and I think as a depend head, I do deserve to be part of the conversation that myself is going to be. Thank you.
Since we have Melinda. On standby, we have Shere.
Good afternoon. So I'd like to say that I have been a part of budgets for thirty years, or thirty budgets for this. I mean, I had twelve years experience in the auditor office. I have three years' worth of experience as a consultant liaison between the auditor office and the budget office, five years as a budget director, and I've been asked why, to rate, come in and help through budget director. So I feel that I have a lot of experience and yes, the budget is very complicated. And I feel like as department head and other men heads, we've seen been involved in stating our budgets are this layoff, let's see, you feel the layoff notices right now are just premature. You don't know the number, you still don't know the numbers. Why are we leaning off, why are potentially laying off people messy with their lives, their livelihood, they're messy with the determines because we have no control over weapons in our budget? And I just feel this is all premature and to not happening at the point. Thank you.
Next, Shirley. Then on standby, we see.
Good afternoon, Chair, APD, and Council. I have been tapped to be here and appearing in my purse, but it has to be nice to be taken as the Council. I would to reiterate and reinduce all the comments made by Thompson myself at the special meeting on twentieth. We still keep gathering and evaluating numbers of the council office and will provide instrument for the June ninth look here. As has been very rightly stated by the previous speakers, it appears the numbers in college by you, appears the number currently in relation may not be acted and therefore don't they fall the base for any decision being at the point. But based on the limited numbers given so far regarding county councils office, but specifically, I'm confident we will demonstrate keeping current staff with type reductions that were already incorporated to our budget request at the CAO direction. Admitted, will less costly and the reasons previously said in that we'll continue to, to take such action to release with vital legal requirements and standards. Thank you.
Do you have?
Alright, afternoon, it's Loop Publics. For those who don't know, the county has two departments, collect revenue, generate revenue for bulk account budgets, and at public agencies as well. There were the decision to use the already listed steps of treasurer, tax collector, and assessors office is counterproductive towards solving counties' new situation. In my four years here in the county, I dealt with a lot of illogical processes and decisions. However, decisions towards the staff of those two teams, number one, a topless, a baffling division, swing gears towards solutions to sell a certain step. And then as a free year, they are salarying to other step if for form in a manner. So I told by budget stat, which is two books were the budget, that there actually is salary steps increases, salary increases, proposed neckers, but this is predictive to what some board members might understand. So I would suggest it's true, there's a misinformation that for our salaries is proposed current staff, a very not painless, but logical solution to a budget issue could simply be freeing staff salaries. Because I mentioned, board over the years have given severance, folks got a five step increase. There was a trail under wonderful things. But if you add those up, you know, some of the steps over the last few years have been nineteen percent. And if someone were to the current step increase, that's four percent of salaries in just two years. Therefore, without name the numbers, how much salary freeze might save, but consistent salary stat is our biggest bit number. I would suggest a possible solution to a complicated budget is to consider a salary freeze. Thank you.
Thank you for clarification on that, Tony Cole, because.
That by doing step increase, it does not include if we go into negotiations and there a increase in.
Right, but stepping surgery like the little red stuff, everyone likes. Oh, you for that?
Next, S U Hope.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board of Supervisors. My name is Gina Cardas, and I come today as CAU, I've been local chair president. I am always dedicated to the employee services office, where I've been serving for the past eight years. Cindy is Denise Tana, chief union steward, has been leading the transport department for the last twenty-three years, and ran AIU five local treasurer, has been a local leader the past eighteen years in county with ASA. We stood for you three weeks ago and asked our desire, collaborate with the county, ensure safeguard member job, help pay a save a cost, and restore revenue generating sources. Being known, then we have received minimal reciprocation and inter, and now possibly a layoff here to an alternate high, proposed staff letter being drafted, directed to issued like staff. We no longer position asking to together, but instead have to point needing work together with the most consistency. We know that we both have this goal aligned to, to ensure the need of the community met and the risk is going to tread. We hopeful during.
Call sorry, reset calls. Go ahead.
We are hopeful during this time need, we move, come together and find solutions to the disj好的 impact on armors and committee layoffs would occur. For our declaration successful, we to have hard, this conversation with the utmost transparency come with common of wanting to do everything in our board, key staff we currently have, able to continue to provide the necessary services our community needs. Initiative need to enlarge department heads, and for instance, only they can provide for knowledge of budgeting and run their apartments. The worst NXP circuit, as the burden emperor for delivering the community services really fall on their shoulders, and any offically impacts there to your departments efficiently and actively.
While we stand board wanting to react servitively with the accuracy of budget first being in question, we want to prevent any panic or chaos ensued from the actions made prematurely. And we insist that before we take any actions or begin, that we first get to a place of knowing the true budget numbers are be moving forward with any decisions that could have devastating impacts on our staff and community. We hand with members of community and effort find solutions together to prevent tragedy from occurring and hopefully that together we make the reality.
See.
Good afternoon. I'm here today not as the department head of the human services agency, also as partner admitted to the being San Beni County. We recognize significant change in county ministry now for the last year and urgency of the budget situation. To fulfill effective, we urge collaboration, transparency, timely communication. All department and labor unions encompass with the civil service rules. Decisions, especially the voluntary layoffs must be made, not be made easily. In human services after provide safety net and employment services to children, family, and vulnerable adults of San Beni County. Each county department operates differently, and we respectfully urge the board to recognize that budget decisions, which is higher freeze and layoffs cannot follow a one size fits all approach, such as can have serious unintended consequences to people relying on us the most. Our department is uniquely funded through complex state and federal allocation that requires to maintain specific staffing roles and performance. Delight strategic hiring essential, notional, meeting combined standards, achieving performance targets, and buying down the full staff fund. Positions requiring specialized expertise are just one items or credit investments in sustaining services securing financial stability. We are not requesting additional resources for any youth county general fund. We are simply asking for the ability of the fund already allocated to us for ended purposes serving our community. We appreciate your partnership and full consideration. Working together, we protect essential services, make a lasting impact on the life those depend us. Thank you.
Good afternoon, the Chair of the town Slav County Assessor. And I've worked on budget for over twenty years now. And I have to say, this is the most challenging and difficult budget that I've ever worked on. And as far as the proposed layoff list, you know, as department had never notified that list. As a matter of fact, received through text through my son who said, who received it from one else. I was really shocked and surprised on it. I really wasn't given opportunity to provide any put on list whatsoever. You know, during the two thousand and twelve budget, I said much more fairness, much more fair. We had five years of negative tax roll, equalling up twenty percent reduction pretty bad overall. But that, it was more transparent. We're given option. Each department will open seek, each department will have a list of ideas what we could do, furloughs, pay cuts, just as much as we could, but no, the notices were not maturely. On March ninth, you know, I am looking at notice, you know, the notices we had two are also already had notice, purpose notice. On March thirtieth, indicated HR and indicated I have one lay in the office. But I asked the other positions in office if they had those positions because, you know, to recap, I had one assignment position that I had lay off, they didn't make evasion. So that position was frozen and vacant. Okay. Had one mapping position that's currently vacant, and if you guys authorized me to add that position, I don't know if that's off the table now. I had one accounting off, I had one accounting position with extended medical leave, have another assignment that's out on family leave for I don't know how long. And then what I understood that my temp position might be off, and I have five temp positions in this. They're crucial. Just one individual alone through the LEO program, that's a little entity owned program, that's when corporations don't notify the state, there's a change of ownership, they pay penalty, they don't notify date within any dates. And one individual just recently got in a hundred and seven thousand dollars to the Assessor's office and a few more, by the way. So if you pay that person off, and a person also responsible for assessment deals, we like almost half a billion dollars is responsible. And even that would do, and without him, you know, in place, invincible to operate. You know, you asked me for objective, I'm not the person. It's probably higher any of their accounts. I don't know I can make six percent objection with all these intended layoffs in my office. And all future tests would be jeopardy as well. This is still lining, whether I do have grant money over a hundred sixty thousand that I could use for these positions. And I think that's pretty shit. So thank you.
Now, do you have Eric Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Board. I'll start with, I've ever been so excited for a new department head, our new CAO, let me come on board. Hope she's wants the chance to come here, but I'd be happy about it. I was very hesitant to speak today because I didn't enter my opinion where it belonged. But I heard that if I found a department with what's gone, that's going to reflect poorly on my staff. So I decided to come up here and go over prepared rooms that I had. We talked a lot about this department about transparency. Honestly, I think we need to be talking about is integrity versus ignorance. Integrity of the leadership in the county is top of much the overall seventy-two hours. I obviously have never felt so stuck in the role. I'm very close with many people here. I care about part of items, and I absolutely despise fighting, despite and fight. I want this county to be successful and I want everyone here to thrive. I also face fellow department heads who thinly spoke to, who's generally being let alone by the board at this point for the priority of the public, the eternal equal. But I want the case to know, I've been in a room for quite some time, our department meetings, that are adding, hiding, holding cards to their chest, come interaction, discuss with your department head. I'm going to call you five, it's strange, makes it seem like directs coming from you. But I've had phenomenal conversations over last few days with some of you, and truly that you're in the dark. That's what I believe. That's all the point, very confusing. We're very small here. This was one to catch who it's, nobody can have different stories going on, different groups that pull, and affected the groups aren't that sound, communicate with each other. I think that's going here, and I make wonders running the show in addition of this, I mean, separate admin from the O A board. So as it's happened for many years in this, this is not going to be a cool thing to say, but I'm going to say it. It happens in years in this, many people are putting divisions not ready for, don't have any experience in this being, and then they're gratified the all when they inform. It seems to me there's a bit of a con of errors occurring. We brought spend of consensus in and have placed before that here. Of other on time basis that are supposed to be contributing and not to see it contribute more. The industry office also seems to have grown exponentially, while the processes have gotten larger and more concluded for departments. Cool. I can tell you there's real links, departments were not consulted as to what position they could without, if absolutely needed. Some say our interim CAO is a decision solely, others say she was directed to by supervisor. Was in a department meeting when the interim CEO was asked directly, please let departments know what was coming. That really did not happen. That's a fear of leadership and a lack of cooperation to govern, to get my expert leaders in office and department. I close, I'm sure everyone's real excited that I'm doing that. I want you to know, truly hope that there's not an issue of integrity as much as an issue of ignorance. Neither one is good, ignorant, don't have a premeditated deceive. The only reason I threw that in is because since I got here in two fourteen, The only reason I throw that in is because since I got here in two fourteen, this is not directed at any person. Other department heads weep about it, have not always had eyes and tell you here in counties, Benito. The last thing, there's very finite amount of people actually attention to this, the one show, speak and follow social media. Most community don't follow this, most of them don't, most don't even know why not. I implore every here and everyone watching truly to please talk to everyone know, as it when it comes to destructive measures come to further our account back, we're in bad shape and may a example brought a small pool few, it's going to continue to have devastating impacts going forward. I saw my department heads elected to feel as we're signed on the issue when it was initially raised to speak up future, it's better now and it get worse. Their fund I property tack only, clearly that not enough, thank you.
I'll zoom you in, please, your name, record, three minutes.
Hey, yes, I want to thank all the department heads that sat up today. Uh please listen to them, the actors of the department, that's the ones that can be seen, so they can tell you exactly what's going on. With the department, you don't have the experience, the knowledge, what has been done in the department. To fund, they can see because they are hopeful, they're consistent, not irresponsible and not in flames of the citizens. Stop spending money on roads and travel. Share community, you acknowledge that you are very strong and that. I ask you to review yourself, we got down for the ad committee, and appoint supervisor and the car, who had a concern, divided, have experienced. And usually have the best interest of the county that is with you. You asking for forty percent of that, I ask you the board supervisor to voluntarily get twenty percent. Show the stats for the backbone of San Diego County and that is the stat. Don't understand is you can have an activity, you need an anatomy and you lie before it was presented last week. When you say we did not know what going on yet, you claim being obvious means just as many cents. No, for the first day, you bet, 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 it's intention. Twenty-five thousand dollars a month, thirty thousand dollars a year, for what, with the bank? If you so want to keep the county, we're going to find out the losses, who actually is in the red side, all the going on with red and yellow. Recent, all the red noses, offer transparency, stop hiring new fire chiefs. And it is true, you're getting a C O, a car, a lot of expenses a month, where does this come in with your claim that well? You know, nobody bribes a car to work without a county name for it. Let's see, let's um real number here and get down and agree and do not allow your town staff to be. Working out all this chaos and all this slaughter that is started by the parents, I call that from the thing, thank you.
You've been muted, he's earning for record three minutes.
Hello, it's Robert, thank you, I have a special meeting and you know, the comment. Uh Colin, there's a lot to unpack in your opening remarks. It's clear that you're sincere, so in the by crisis, I am shocked at the lack of all information nailed to you and your colleagues on the day to uh you. The nowhere for me is that you do not review financials on places. I'm not anger entity in the world that not review actual financials on a fiat basis. I also think that is probably going to be area spreading experience, looking at all that. Financials are meant to be presented, it is possible your system is designed, decides also non-financials to user, you got what they need, but that's not likely. You need one current account to spend every time necessary to get any information in format you need. Don't sacrifice this, a lead athletic time. For me, I would be starting with either audit officials or information by the state hold office and work backwards from there. Every item is financial, has documents of support as a detail on each. This will allow the actual H P roll forward to a year that day, month by month format. This basic financial reporting, if anything else, that can understand why you not have monthly financial information. I heard calling you for a team sometimes, suggest if everyone's in the room, take that heart and act out. Even if all have to have a story every day to discuss this eye, I would do it. Let me call the comment and then if you have to do that, this is crisis. Importantly, everyone gets listened to and the turn gets to the new account. If one of you is beginning, per doing the year taking, needs to listen to that and just. You are all equally important and we all do reputation, live and come together as a team, let's see Hollywood version of you solving the problem. The light box is a, this address specific how that happened. The other crisis is the possibility, you acknowledge the crisis and accept to have the count on the stable path, finally, you will be heroes. Look at how we end with helping people on hospital, we can do this, thank you very much for listening to us.
Been unmuted, he's staying for the record three minutes.
Thank you so much, uh secret one, current and past member of the San Beni County Civil Jury. Um I do have a couple comments, it's um very concerning that this January of this year, the environment of our local governance has been complete unrest, confusion, turmoil, mistrust, disrespect and a lack of transparency. Um and and an accident, right, this is an accident. So I've been online since hearing what the Thursday I, I've been looking at the proposed budget, twenty twenty six proposed budget. I noticed a couple of things um that are near my heart, was there's the animal shelter. Um it's actually nice to see the shelter did not yet a significant cutting in funding, although that's um surprising since our animal shelter staff refused to accept animals. Were surrendered by people that were transitioning out of the river bed, uh no choice their own, with no place for their animals to go. Uh when clients wanted to render animal, the shelter refused to accept, I don't know who wrote up on that, the animals were shipped in included in this and should have been required to accept the animals. Um twenty twenty six proposed budget for the board supervisors, I didn't, shows one million three hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. In twenty three, the actual budget was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in two years, the budget board is surprised for selling it, it's more than double. And I'll reiterate what previously said, if anyone else taken that maybe the civil jury budget in twenty twenty four was seventy-five thousand dollars. And the proposed budget for the civil jury twenty twenty six is seventeen thousand five hundred and forty two dollars. It's a cut by nearly two thirds. Civil jury is the one for the community, they are mandated by the constitution, they look for accountability and ethic conduct is no secret that there are members of the board are things of the civil jury, which is much more, so we need to keep the civil jury fully funded. And in fact, I would recommend that next year, there is additional funding to favor a forensic audit of the county budget, thank you so much.
You've been unmuted, please, your name, the record, three minutes.
Hi, this is Bart Thompson, this is really pretty individual. Uh I just wanted to mention that it didn't like the board um didn't make enough one of the recommendations, that was me, me, or the one to decide it as a bunch. Uh the board has the authority to initiate the unions regarding stepfires and furloughs. Stepfires and furloughs were successfully implemented during the recession. Um and so the effect of the stepfires that P P K, the same stuff, some were just drifting away. Rob, they have more victory than Kansas, but also see for the devastation and for the enemy. They accepted in commitment, they gave, we can have the obligation not to. Just what, lots of individuals, they want us to do. Perhaps for a noble reason, I would get in right now, but rather the tech could side to cut, describe if you're talking about the way that we could free salaries perhaps first. As for the stress spending, maybe for a year, six months, and then it gets much more time to cut contracts, uh attrition. I reckon the board has the corporate time, uh I'd love to tell you what we're doing, thank you.
Next, we jump.
Good afternoon, Chair, board supervisors, Joe McGinn's also control. I just wanted to uh come up and let board know that a couple items. Uh one is uh when I was a graduate uh in business, I had a professor who. And he, his lesson that definitely, and the one that I've that I've tried to follow my life since then, was if you are a manager or you're a head of corporation, you're head of a government, you're in the C O office. The one we didn't absolutely have to have is integrity. And that integrity is so important to have because integrity is lightable. You don't uh you don't delude people and believe that um you're safe from any sort of termination or layoff or something like that. And I think that um it's management responsibility to work with the heads know that there was an imminent layoff into it. And that position would need to be selected and management responsibility to work with each department to ensure that the most efficient way of making reductions is made, that can't be done by anyone, it has to be done by each department and know how to run their respective departments. So the word is already still, it's still a topic. I know, I know that um the the budget committee has been struggling because it doesn't really um have trust in numbers. The odds off has just recently been invited into that conversation and we provided numbers that have been audited by external auditors that are liable numbers. Uh there are numbers that have uh have achieved certificate of financial war from the G O A. And so I, you know, feel very confident that uh the audit office, we get to provide to the audit committee any portion of information it can um. Do however believe that providing access into a high complex system as ERP is not, it just doesn't work. Because it it's not designed to use a port in form that you're looking for. It takes years of experience to be able to understand how to hold a using a very powerful background of program called this analytics to be able to pull this full information in the format that you that desire. So I would really recommend not do that, just uh just to asking what what information you want from us and we will provide that information. We provide store information, anything related to what what has happened as of yesterday, because our ERP system updates daily. So that daily update also updates the open system that the county uses or public viewing. That is an audit back or up that occurs, it may not in the form that that they might desire, but that's where we're here for. We're we're here to help you get the information in the format that you want, I can provide that too. Uh with regard to um the cut proposed, personally, don't uh I don't think the cuts in that were proposed were very efficient in what they have been proposed, I do believe however, that given the norm of the budget gap, the board will have to make, I don't know uh to to what uh three, the cuts will have to occur, there will be, because there's no question in mind. And I will say this, this budget uh but this budget disparity, budget hole that created, wasn't created in one year, this was for several years. And so because because the budget has to be managed annually, monthly, as was adjusted or pre-caller, um that I think was not uh was was not the on behalf of the board. My office staff are ready to help uh the committee, board uh with information so that the board can make the tough decisions. But tough decisions have been fully vetted with all department, my my colleague out here, so we minimize impact services.
I know for comment.
Um we just want to uh thank everybody, fantastic um communication. Um think, you know, just for the bad D R B, whether it's information, we need combos, there are more, there's a couple super or uh even the open system, which is very complex to have into. And that's, I think, you know, to give President of the Skizm a moment, opportunity as their ad member, that we just felt we haven't had a level of detailed information to analyze so we can pinpoint what the issues are, because our issue, it's this, you go from eighty-seven million dollars to a hundred and seventeen million dollars and cut a million dollars and then what is the app, it just doesn't make sense and I think even the point, we could criticize the board supervisors budget. Like we didn't propose increased board supervisors, we proposed decrease of the board supervised budget, just like every department, we looked uh all the categories, you know, uh travel train, uh services applied across board, trying to avoid uh as as we can as far as the um the cutting of both positions. Um and one of the, I think, points of day is so we we collaborate with heads, we do write uh going for, if there's a will from board, a team of county officials that move this thing forward, collaborating regularly with departments, once we are now exactly looking at a financial picture, what are your commissions? How you, uh how the union buy uh thoughts on how to address this, we open every year on this. Um and then uh budget act never asked for a forty cent cut, in fact, C O said, budget ad hoc doesn't leave. The current budget is accurate and we have every, every turn, we said this is not ready, not, how far out to June can we go? Because of our head, I had a lot of in writing, please, so if somebody needs to sell the emails, I'll write it, everybody on the staff was that I very consistent about. We get this thing if we present it. Uh and uh also said poor math, I made it quick, that wasn't a mountain, I'm good, I'm not, I'm not an idiot. Um and then uh Brian, we can't talk about the session, but you know, we are going to talk about the current situation concerns. Um and I'm sure that we have a full discussion about um what occurred. Baker T, the Colton that we heard, I should have mentioned, they are coming, they're planning to be here, June ninth, pour over um to go what they put over. And uh and I have communication, I know beliefs to reserve a lot of attention to reach out and today as well, supervisor last case before we bring.
Thank you, thank you everybody for coming on, taking here with ten, I agree with all. I've been doing but over ten years and I tell you, um anybody who's me, those think I'm. And I check every night, I go through it and I go back, I get history. Again, people, we will be saying, so we're not going to conversation, history, budgets have to be transparent. Or complicated, they have to be transparent, because they're not. We see hearings from people more than happy to pick up alternative act. We hear this constantly, it's a long ago, I tell you, experience is very frustrating and I can tell you uh out of the gate, from my first comment to us, if this is the proposed budget, on two pieces of paper, I can tell you votes, you know. Cause I knew this was go, we need data, we need a lot of information, because if we get information, we can add the history, we can stand the department. When we have that information, then we can go back and start talking the next, that all of you. If anybody tells you that your budget is better than you, I'd laugh with you guys, it doesn't work that way. Now, I had the enjoyment of coming to the city of Ulster, and that was French with the Zer. The city was complete, it was literally about bankruptcy or what we did. And take your now of your turn to school. I remember my professor in my master's program, talking about finances and budgeting and understanding ups and downs. Don't ride the up, that's going to be forever, and don't budget the down, smooth line, smooth line. So you're ready, we go down and you say when it goes up. We have limited eight percent um policy at city of reserve. Minute that policy was broken, the exact same thing happened. We have a lot of work to do, but we need accurate information. A county of the size that under should be pretty thick of what should be going through. We should be in long deep conversations, understand what happened, no pardon. There's a lot of dependence on timings, those on, this is a dip in the cycle. We're all going to look at it and understand it and be ready, because it's going to get better for a while, it's going to get worse, I tell you this right now, quite sure of it. So get a look at this thing, then start to plan for it, together, I got you, personally, I'm confident that we're going to make this work, because I see issues in what we're receiving. Paul, you're right, you can tell us today and get it, start to understand and look. But one of my first questions was, what reserves? And when I don't answer on that, I get very nervous. Because you all know, that's starting point, what's our reserves, you know, it's that line. What are the actual revenues, that's first parts. Why do we have expenses exceeding these numbers? How do we make sure this is correct? If we have the information, we can work towards it, if we don't, it makes very difficult to turn the help of you all to go through this and help us, we need all the data, all work together, so to go through all this. And one of those I noticed in writing was, he's a colleague of these, because a lot of you will work. And what I saw, it's all being liked it. He did the feast immediately through this, as that was through the. But more importantly, have to stop this face budget, all the experts happen in a minute, you can hear the experts here. And we start hearing like misinformation out there and we start spotting that, that's a tragic, tragic mistake. The birds will tease the street, as long as you're not in the line, if you are, then we know what some other ones we're going to do. I remember that, but I think the point the chair has made is asking help. I'm very clear at the very beginning of this conversation, we discussed process, I'm talking about layoffs or cuts and I have my facts. That's what I did on day one, that's what I say today, I don't have facts, how can I talk to laying people off? Cut increments, five hours, any of you, no, that's where we get to, what are the facts? We can try, how we can play that make this work? Again, personally, I'm I'm confident we get there, there will be dust, I don't doubt that. Do we have reserves, how do we make this work, how to continue, and we get fishing, and while you're, I know super heroin to go.
Um I really don't know where to start, except Thursday's meeting, I I left that meeting the understanding that we're uh moving the conversation to, I believe it's June ninth, which is the day if I have to write, uh meeting and we're going to have more information presented to us after talking with the interim C O of last week. Uh I'm confused why uh we have a June thirtieth deadline eight layoffs. So the information I was given is that notices had to go out in order to be able to post the budget, to be able to post uh which is not post prior to that meeting on Thursday, it is, you can go onto uh the budget and finance page of county budgets and recommended it there, within that budget, F E Es that are scheduled to cut eighty-nine point three. That is not at all what was presented, if that was supposed to be the cuts, then why wasn't lit present on Thursday at Thursday's meeting? Um I feel right now for the term C O is on lead, this is not all on her shoulders. Um I believe their pressures have given, be able to make a balanced budget where the pressures come from, I don't know. That was discussed by the assessor in twenty twelve, I hear, that was a camp wait, we went through it, it was painful. We met with the unions, we met with departments, negotiated administration, came up with options individually, as departments presented them to the board with all our own positions to cut. But that's a collaborative process, where did the positions get elected, how they selected and who elected them? And how were the department informed to be able to say, well, if you need that amount, let me go to my budget and find a way. Let your department heads who are experts be ones to do the the actual budget and cut projections need. Other things is go into the budget and you into Open Gov, the thing I don't see in Open Gov is the twenty-three, twenty-four actuals. I see actual in certain areas of the budget, I see it for actually twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five actuals, what I don't see. I see actuals in there, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, we should be able to have the twenty-four, twenty-five, am I wrong? to have the twenty four twenty five am I wrong if I can clarify um twenty twenty five is our current year it's our current year shouldn't we able to have actual with projection from department
we have predictions from apartment because year has not because we don't have that actual
we don't have overall actuals the entire year we do actuals to us in day don't we
have predicted balance
you have projected down the prediction from department
yeah
okay there are reading that can't be an open gov
I could work out but historically we we've made a private actual um that are after the disclose it would be best if we buy
this would be projections because you go into the actual budget there are projections in some of these half budget in own gov where we're very clearly showing some projections back then where where departments were putting projections in own gov that could get more transparent problem has I can't get any burst actually make sense overall and now the budget is complete listed and shown in in budget finance through one of those departments are showing when you go into every single one of those departments it's showing you not only what their actuals for twenty three twenty four but their budget are so I'm not seeing where we're not getting the information unless only about fund balances which would be come back to auditor and having not to work with the budget um ad hoc um the notification of that does not appear that it was transparent not only the department had it to fold word so I'm really concerned about why we did put a pause on that and why why we're rushing go straight to those instead of you we've got we've got one contractor in five years over seven million dollars a consultant what they do for us what we get out of it aren't we looking at the big tick items and not little get items a four eight point five million dollar budget for roads and bridges in the budget seven point zero five of that is out of general fund if we do put a pause on layoffs that are hand around the finances then let's put hold on general and it come in my disk too and residents are gonna hate me I mean sorry right now I got people screaming at me about Pench New Adria Linga Road they're atrocious thank you for bringing the roads down because it's to the point cars falling in puddles not tires the puddles um we change some of priorities that have safe roads that be not be replaced the road that we need right now because we have a revenue problem if we're cleaning the assessor's office from staff we will never able to get revenue adjustments up the property taxes are number one so unless that department alone is being funded to be able to ensure we are getting every dollar we possibly can any of the cuts only going to hurt more by the parts in offenses being able to reduce service that they need to do keep functioning that's why the collaboration between the departments is very very important the big process is a very complicated process and we look at are looking at upper positions and is our department given higher based on what the contracts are with our labor groups we have contracts our labor groups from the last May twelve layoffs there's new work in those contracts have to be done their way can't go through and re-pick position department have the efforts of their apartment and they sustain and absorb in cuts we're not I do not want a person here telling you at a department head what you need cut but what do affects it up here is us in transparency we have a three million dollar shortfall if that is the number if that number accurate we need work together to be able to come up with how we're going to reduce that that is a combination right now if we do raises yes step increase or five percent we should be looking at doing freezes on steps we should negotiating with labor unions and negotiations about can we hold on raises in certain areas could even have a conversation about uh future maybe um uh flow or other things before we do adding positions so I'm in session other stuff's gonna discuss presented to us which I'm looking forward to um the actuals right with actual predictions of cost this fiscal year are the most important things we need to be able to compare the twenty two twenty three actuals the twenty three twenty four actuals that clearly listed in open gov if our actual objections are are drastically exceeding you know where our budget limitations are we need actually booking at because in overall budget summary and and looking at all these categories together showing that in twenty two twenty three our actuals we came in sorry I just be letting jump another page oh to the sheriff sorry okay twenty two twenty three we were thirteen million dollars under our expense if I have right is that right revenue less expenses so revenue was a hundred and sixty five million then we're expense a hundred and fifty two million so we were teaming um under budget in actuals in twenty three twenty four we're thirty point five million under budget actuals our twenty four twenty five budget showing in own gov which I do not show the match we actually dotted was ninety one million dollars in whole twenty four twenty five that's what open gov says we now the department requests for twenty five twenty six when the whole one hundred and two million dollars and the budget recommended is show a sixty million dollar in the hole so I really can't tell you where we are or what we need to do or what the recommendations are but I do agree with Clayton with this board is that do need more input in the department it's we rely on our treasurer and our our former budget officer that worked in the E P system for years we need to rely on the expertise of our audit and our D who has accounting background we need to bring these people together and have them tell the top where we are it shouldn't us telling you where we are it should be you telling us the experts the other thing that I don't comfortable with is can we start the layoff the layoff process started is even legal now I'm asking I'm told answer that right now but that question I'm putting out there have fulfilled all legal obligations in order to delay process as it has been started I don't think have the last thing is I think this word agree that we don't have good control and we've had bad practice for years of vacant budget vacant budget is a really easy way to be able to save made to cut costs that you expecting and movement or based on the fact that you need those the savings to will cut other costs we will agree can't do conceiving anymore but there may need be a processing out that if we're doing our budget are reducing conditions first have we discussed with the department heads which positions they recommend thing first are there retirees that are going to be retiring this fiscal year have those department heads been informed of those retirees and those positions available to freeze I mean there's so many questions at the same time we have not over years received fiscal reports on quarterly level on a monthly basis so we've had history year after year of living along with just basically over budgeting and underperforming to be able to balance budget and goal here is get our finances under control so the services that needed are being provided I don't understand we're cutting so many positions from then departments have funding if they have the funding wire cutting positions strong arming then the cutting services are redents are need I truly don't have an answer I have more questions the one that I will say if you read the auditors no came out in April twenty twenty five um auditors uh uh committee it's under management override controls says we are pleased to report that no such matter or identified during our audit so right there it's saying that they couldn't find anything suspicious improper venue recognition again it's we are pleased to report no actual instance is worried enough during our audit these are professional auditors we have trust buddy and that means we have trust each other we have trust the numbers that staff are providing if the one I don't see here is uh how we add our offer appropriate fourteen point seven million or nine cent available spending at government discretion it's an assignment balance at the end of fiscal year twenty five three to four so there's numbers that start making sense to me and it asking questions get more questions so I hope this team of individuals will come together and I highly recommend that we bring more departments uh to the table and have a voice in this management G D uh when it comes to and then I'll done I really honestly even know what to say when it comes to allowing access to elect officials to win E R B's um inappropriate violation of government covering's best practices key reason are segregation of duties priding oversight policy direction is what our job is is not also can be a conflict interest potential conflict in particular in area area of having access to data or demonstration data and privacy and confidentiality are confidentiality areas that that this would not be going into also risk of undue influence and odd and um accountability issues to find that period of improper improper use of data and information we're policymakers I don't wanna go back in being department head I'm sorry I left I got tired of doing it yes I remember every time I did my remanded budget I went in there and changed the numbers that it matched the depart the CEO recommend or recommended my requested was always matching recommend Joel and I know went round and round and enough times that screenshot attached my budget because it wasn't transparent we need to hear the department's requests and it's to be documented publicly and then C O's amend needs to be able to show the discrepancy between what departments are asking for and the C O is recommending what besides I have no comment
thank you supervisor Dinger
yeah thank you um so I wanna I wanna repeat everything that's been said here but uh for board members because I think we're all generally saying about here about the same things we'll say after this week in fact uh came out of that I understand it really um it was not what I thought we were talking about previously so that was uh surprising me well and I'm not gonna repeat everything they said but do appreciate all department head in here I appreciate everyone uh the public commend for us and I appreciate the information we're getting um I am calm we can this work I I'd support the recommendations or addressing the um the item that the chair uh founded upon a support recommendation with the budget management team I believe we're calling it I think it's important it's necessary at this point obviously um something needs to be done we need to figure out um and I said I said I'm open to whoever wants to sign that who thinks they value support was mentioned as far as the D and I think it was um or whoever would ask for that that I think you need to figure out uh as far as the layoffs and the lay situation is is out of state here that I didn't we were going there I didn't think the directions were going at least not that moment I know those were in the sense when they write in their stands um I'm glad that we can have this and we can clear it up and figure out exactly how to proceed forward um and so I'd say I repeat I will I was the one that was out of math wasn't going and I wasn't said that
thank you um so I think I we probably all feel incredibly frustrated sitting here I incredibly frustrated and um I left Thursday's meeting and I'm sure it happened between end of our meeting and Friday afternoon um but I'm very disheartened ever it happened and um it's really frustrating to be sitting here right now um supervisor Cor thank you for the insight that bringing on kind of your experience being former department head and the knowledge that bring um if that you definitely see this in a different light and we all see it so I really appreciate you sharing some of the things I don't have additional knowledge regarding our budget right now um what I know is exactly you all know what's presented actually you all probably know more than I do at this point regarding the bit and helping build department but um all I know is what's presented publicly and I'm just wondering if may have more of these discussions that the board's ad hoc might be more helpful and it be um you know I feel like now there we're in blinking right it's like it's helpful and we're all in it together so I don't know I I sorry you guys are kind of raff on some of this um you know just wonder maybe some of these discussions would be helpful if we could all part of it um I think there's admit messages to everybody um I agree with the comments that we can't chew off notice of haste um these are both lies and I think we need to be really careful we need to really throw I'm curious I've got a question for this board at the time we rescinding layoff notices that we issued last week so what not were directed
I wanted to talk about the layoffs misses and um
so can I just
because I will say I have this concerns um and brought up everything we should do here today that those three things advised depending on session if I can leave the lines just like to keep it don't be too obvious
okay I mean guess I don't understand why I need to go and close session to have the discussion of issue if it wasn't done poorly I just don't understand why we can't send that and work collectively together on this it just seems like it should be conversation we have together out in the open so people really where we all stand on this issue right it it may be very uncomfortable that we're gonna go in there and we're gonna go vote on layoff notices and I know that that we're going to but I'm seeing it sounds like that probably what we're gonna do really really uncomfortable with that um I I don't place the blame on any I don't what has inspired like I said um she isn't here to defend herself I think we've nursed into a perfect end of storm and like I said I'm really frustrated um the budget issues aren't created over this year they've happened over many years um just meaning it for the skirt would be agreeable with twenty percent but I want to show that I'm committed to find a solution feeling the pain if this is the route we need go then I stand with all of you I will take a cut no problem all this together uh I want a team layer I I really feel like we need time I would ask as as part of me a solution can roll with the twenty four twenty five just an interim vending man then schedule a series of like workups to discuss to discuss the issues kind of really evaluate everything giving us being department head giving the community opportunity analyze and giving us a little more time I think we'd be solid moving forward and we need to look at saving and to a place everybody can kind of re on um or all I port the but management team I have some concerns with some individuals that um are being suggested to be put on there um I think some of the individuals um can go up to this to happen over uh this didn't happen over this year and so um I want to send anybody to the back but I do have some concerns with some individuals so um again we're really frustrated I'm really sorry we all going through this just know when I get this we're gonna work through it a hard to believe we are bored really want find a solution um we're trying to be really careful I appreciate the work that you all have done and I would suggest if there's any way we do this together I think that
I wanted to respond the caution is not to discuss in particularly not to uh vote on layoffs the the caution is as the gen is there are union issues and there may be discussion union that I discussed here today about coordinating unions constituting unions to resolve this problem make part of team that's what those sessions about
okay I'll try I want to have this up that was specifically the issue that I brought up set it in closure
but if there's sense from work together why do we need to go and close session say that because it's law just because that's where I struggle I feel like me to be transparent we need to work together if anything it feels like we go back in there it's not transparent I'm just I'm trying to put myself everybody you know choose right now and the feeling they have and if there's anything that we do help alleviate kind of this distrust being transparent guess just like I would willing to but if it's legal it's illegal cheers sorry
supervisor you are you done thank you
I just wanted to to say that you know we're all concerned but I wanted to be clear no way is his head's fault and there's numbers this process has been happening and I gotta say I I was surprised when it's like how did you guys do this in the past and it always works times were good but when you go bad that shows I got issues I want absolutely absolutely clear not any fault it's a stat fault it's a process that has been accepted over years it's kind of out they finally come up it's not it was a I don't want it was a bad process but I going back again for myself you need twenty five years you need to know me percentages each category of each department over the years that helps you track it I can't remember the F E's for lateral year that's difficult because if you're in department in each department what happened in twenty twenty two how many F E's you have there's an increase in twenty twenty four maybe three three what so we know and that helps us all understand what's going on I can tell you going through buses in the past a lot of times you'll see money come into apartment one timeies and it's treated for again but to ensure that it's not there but that continues and these are the issues that we're trying to sort through to understand the full numbers so we can have a picture and make sure we're just going to drastic measures of losing and cuts and everything else understand the numbers so we can have good discussion audit I I personally I don't mind the idea of all of us working here it's just what I'm sure it's a huge commitment of time and it's to me the best because that leads transparency we all start to see information against and then we'll clear because again it's the one hundred percent transparent it's complicated it should be one hundred percent transparent we don't have um allegations thrown around publicly
yeah and I'm just taking what everybody said just you to know that um you know comes to ERP and Joe Paul is this and and Steph is this been I don't have a hair pullout anymore but last two months I pulling out where I have left just to get information what what do we look at and I get whether it's digital uh just need to look at all these numbers that's the entire point no care what format it's I just want the board have information so if we collab through some sort of motion today and to direct whether it's our office or whoever whoever it may be uh the various twenty four twenty five uh object actual as as far into the again recount it but the detail that will is the story just categories meals and services where it's jumping out what is that can go on so with the pair of twenty four twenty five and what we have in the draft twenty six we need to print all off and look at the binder then maybe that we need to do um and in the end you spend a few dollars on some paper it's gonna save us a lot money and to actually have the information that's biggest I can't emphasize enough felt I've been in the highlights for two months I've been over and over and you know asking 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 because we know one of the events and add as a minister coming up that we have weekly meeting throughout the month as well to go in and budget management but go ahead
and as we uh talk about at the uh at budget uh at committee report that you saw was really a page uh I don't know
ninety seven
ninety seven a very very uh detailed report by account comes straight out of the AR system and the over the last uh four years what what I do is present you account over the last four years of comparison of what is expected drop into each account what's right now plus the change what which is is sending far uh but as departments of what they expect to spend and might have to summarize that by by object because some of uh some of those accounts actual line items you you're not gonna have that that detail what the department expects to send they what they're gonna do everything the service supply budget but we're able to uh grab that information show as a uh uh really as a variance and then add that come up with total so that we can have here's what the estimated year and uh amount are for revenue and to expenditures and here's net values and then that real attack the net reuse value how much fund balance used from from the June thirtieth twenty twenty four ending balance which is in the for right now so we'll we'll provide that to you it's not you know it's it's pretty uh it didn't take very long to that we're working on that so um if board like to uh set up meeting the ad hoc or in a way that you know you hire um as as mentioned uh supervisor because it's gonna vary states you know by the United uh these these seven pages right um of items in the general
we're looking for an anomaly here that's what we're looking for in if doing all this cutting why is going up so much it just it's still I don't know I've been watching I don't want
and we still the person
we just don't have answers what is the smoke gun
this is why we got a line on line on we start there uh you know we had the conversation and go to the first they had restricted unrestricted um we need clarity what be used where did that dollars dollars come where they ended for and we can start supervisor I agree with you you've been uh going to the previous years actual and one of the courses we had if we have to go back and start there we've got to do something because we're not as it just saying we're not clear what the heck happened to speak and such but we're clear what happened this year so is yeah the department has really helped with it and say well I I can work with budget that we had let's get through this and as we learn numbers exactly where happened reserves what was intended roads so we determine this is we need to compete I I I I agree because to me budget I know what I know I insist as our board involved day one but I expect that buyer go through factor percentages go from the recommendations have the courses if we were running to say go there and turn that way and I think for all of us it's important to be good for the faith of the community and frankly again it's gonna say well you guys spent this much money on this um it's not actually that's true what we do do this oh a friend told me his friend told him I want to be in that situation my degree on the budget and categories we need facts we need to know so right so it's a big surprise but
yeah and I think uh since since June is the beginning Yeah. And I think, uh, since, since June is the beginning and the ten day notice of the recommended budget has been posted. Then it's appropriate that full budget engineer, uh, do not, uh, participate in, uh, a bit hearings. So the, the bit ad hoc, we work, you know, not until the ninth to then narrow down, uh, what, what you're looking for. So it's not really, you know, so do some work right now. And, um, we really can, again, uh, tweak if you like.
How quick could we have serviceable data that, you know, if we together team, what time of the morning?
Well, I'm going to see how we can, uh, file that this is invited, uh, in a, in a, uh, way that will, uh, will lend in, in a, um, I'm thinking at the BSL, I'm not, you know, talking account, but will lend appropriately set meaningful information. You know, obviously that's what you're looking for.
See, we need that under what's virtual or, um.
Yeah. Well, this is a huge table that we're looking at. It's, it's a, you know, that's why I mentioned earlier that, that, you know, having this to the ERP system is meaningless. Unless you have a lot of experience, might not pull information.
Right. I don't, I'm not looking, I just, for me, I'm just throwing.
And, and that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to provide you with, with that. And, uh, I guess what, what is only two-four hour notice needed for a, a round that could be or a, a ad hoc major notice?
Not, not.
There's no notice.
Okay. So, um, I could, you know, could, uh, provide the, uh, what is to do at, and to the two of the, uh, ad hoc when we're ready to present.
Okay. And how would the board, um, go ahead.
Okay. I want to make sure that we're being crystal clear. We slide by line item. Does that mean in your?
Something more specific than services implies.
Line item is, is salaries and benefits, one or a group of services implies in your options always gets terms. You fix assets, your department cost. And if you are doing comparison across a four-year, five-year, whatever period you're looking at, which I know we had twenty-two, twenty-three there, twenty-four. We can project for twenty-four, twenty-five. We also have to recommend, remember some departments are on, on, um, two cycles, four-year cycles. So we understand the souls department, but I think number one needs to be discussed. Number two is if we look at, at, at that, is it the, the option, uh, services supplies and salary benefits and then find any anomaly that looks very strange, then go into those. But don't go in, uh, trying to do by lines. Here's what I will tell you. If any has worked in this county, you understand that sometimes you post things to a services applies. Not necessarily where it's budgeted. Well, that doesn't mean it wasn't budgeted, just was posted to the same line. Why that was, this sometimes worked by the auditor's office to post things in front line and we did at department, because we didn't under, understand what outside auditors need. So you go into the line by line level, you're going to have real disciplines across the board, because you're looking at things different from budgeted versus where things actually were posted. But it's within that service and apply group. And so my recommendation is don't go down to line by line as an anomaly happens.
Or crease. So is it, we all these, we're not really going to the budget. We're not.
No, the actuals, all actuals.
This is what we're working to mean.
Only, only actuals.
Actuals and then objection, projected actuals, which means department, you have really know where your revenues are coming from, your grants. If you have posted all revenue patches, if you posted all cleanbacks and at one point you spent and project forward, I'm, I've done, I'm sorry. So Paul made me have my numbers way too many times and it took four years before I run ERP, were put to a level I could get my actual fund balances. It free years of being trained by not only Paul, but the accounting team to build in what parameters I had to put, what I had to ask was interest was did, and there's so many questions. So that's why I'm saying we derive on, on our experts.
Yeah. And like I said, something going up, whether it's the amber.
And that's, that's what we're working on now.
Okay. What does the board handle, uh, opening up channels of communication with the department head? So if let's just say it consists of a budget management team, we're going to, we're going to regular board meetings, it's likely a regular board meeting, perhaps fully if need to. Um, and how does the board move forward with communication to our current situation personally and ensuring that departments, uh, you know, to say we had initially want to rip to them week and then have them.
Actually, once nine starts, the, the tense after posting the minimums, it's supposed to be every day until you finally, uh, you, uh, get to a point.
Right. This is why I did not want to personally hold the budget hearing on June ninth. Um, I pushed it against, I said, this should be scheduled. I became me up to the twentieth, the twentieth is the last, because we need ten days. And here are, I, we need to figure that out because we're not ready for prime time and we're going to probably be ready by June ninth. So, um.
I'm just wondering, I know we changed, that we can change it to twentieth instead of June ninth, give everybody a little more time?
What's the last date we do budget here?
I'm pretty sure that covering budget, um, the twelfth is last date to hear and that'd be ten days before budget adopted the third.
Okay. So it clearly is come June, one way or the other. Um, but you're going to the scheduled to get here instead.
It probably noticed that the note that went out Friday, uh, knows the nine as our public hearing. So I think we may have a certain, it was our, we, we hand it to another, we open it that day.
I mean, can, can information add here and then just reschedule a.
And not get distant that.
New information. Um, you just didn't vote on anything.
Right. So it would be expected, it sounded like that we were doing that. But go ahead.
Cause you know, the thing that I need to see is there should be, other than the skill names, which are particularly departments, uh, uh, budget, you know, has this salary benefit supply and that schedule. What, what really you need to know, what is schedule one, schedule two, those schedules very important because those cancellation of reserves, those use fund balance in the budget. Those, um, I know what it's, uh, speaking with Rebecca, she was planning on putting those guests together. So that you have a clearer pick of what the, the budget is going to be used of fund balance and reserves. So that I think is.
Yeah, but we should have, should have started it. If we go back, change time, all this, look, no point, but now looking back, we could have started eighty-seven million dollars. That's just the start point. And it actually probably would go eventually below that because revenues aren't meeting that, but should have started at.
And in fact, um, conversations with Baker Dilly is, um, I think, uh, from, from those conversations, I think they're talking about going to zero-based budgeting, the future, future budgets. In other words, you start building from zero, ground zero, uh, you know, but and just of me, uh, you know, just your budget or you try.
For the revenues, that budget.
Well, I have to say, not a department has been known, but yes, but they're sending that, that some departments, you know, are in counting all the time. There's revenues going in. But understanding also with zero budget is understanding and on a how on this again, procurement, understanding of committed costs or contract and what contracts have rollovers for future school years. If we'd understand how much we've committed and where we have to cut, some of the contracts may be able to be rolled over. So zero-based budgeting should include rollovers of comprises of contracts. And if we had that in the system and connected the budget, it would be efficient for zero-based budgeting.
And can he, I, I don't, this is a very, we're going to work on each other here. Can we also allude to the consulting contracts and our charges? Those three very large categories, would that included in a data that you provide? She's been in contracts quite a bit.
The other charges will be, is, is part of, uh, is part of form.
I know every single contract is every single consultant, single other charges, so that we go with them with fine tooth woman.
Remember, uh, we're only, we're only representing the actual financial data. We don't have a drill down unless, and well, we may be able to do it, but be able to drill into the number, look at a transaction that occurred. And then look at every, every, uh, support document that poured out transaction. That's, uh.
See, these are large pores of our G. And I, we're getting a lot of Joe Paul, if I can, I know very thankful for willingness to, and, and this. There's prior needs to be coming to the table and start that process oddly, but at some point we need to have more information.
Was, was, was on that, you know, we, we start the budget table, uh, identify new changes and then, uh, focus on those. And then, you know, all work on, on, on those, uh, to, to down.
And then if do notice and I would, I would rec, uh, recount to the departments who would help answer what contracts they have, um, instead of taking this into detail. Cause that, as you mentioned, it's time soon.
Here, uh, just tell me.
So I understand that the Pug notice has been issued, but whether every instance you rescind that Pug notice and hey, sorry, we're going to change it. It's not longer on, it's a Pug notice, we're not having it on the night. Now we have it on twentieth. Is that all? Can we do things with that? Just, I, I feel like we get our ducks in a row, other than we're, we're forced to some of these things through that it like, we need to take a step, slip it on a little bit. I reckon is we put out night, maybe not re, I think there's more harm in pushing things through and taking us back, have some of these meetings, maybe Bailey comes in there here on noon night and they're meeting with the budget team and user. And all this in a row, then have a fruit discussion and, um, numbers and things like that, the public, board, every to see, but I don't, is that possible?
No, it's possible. Problem that is apologize for K, um, to discuss changing visually noticing boarding. You could have another.
So have to have a special boarding to then, right? I'll leave that to the chair. Thank you.
You don't have to look up to them. I'd be, but yes, right? You need to have to, it's not right.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and just to solve that real, I'd be fine. Spend media agendas, I'm missing our book here, be fine with that. Um, just to go back to your question, it was a little confusing if we figured out what we're going to do about community treatment departments. Okay. Just wanted to know if I something.
Tell them, you should be able to think to do, uh, super girl.
I'm just, I have her some confidence, and she needs to get married in Washington state, but I can meet at time for that.
The actual twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth, she's married on Friday. Not yet.
We open hearings, we can was.
Could announce Eastern, um, I know our filter flying in from Oregon.
I think we're already going to, we're be pulling the public hearing. I think they, they can hand give presentation. I think be fed stick.
I would amend that we, the board being to end this rescinding of the ring.
Then I'll put that as one of the two lists quick. Um, as far as nineteenth, if look at nineteenth and then continue it, cause you, you continue it. They have them a day, then she have to miss a day, but I mean that we're going to do this and be not even days. It's going to be serious.
Or what you start a meeting and continue with day.
Sure. Okay. So here, I'm sure, let's do the, um, last thing forward to the potential list for recommendations, the chills of complication. Department heads, if we theoretically start this budget management team, we have weekly meetings starting with June ninth. And if any of the department head suggestions, I would invite you to share those come up. Uh, how would want to make sure the department head are more involved as we go forward, as we refine these, or get close to real numbers. I firmly believe we not real numbered at the minute and we are getting.
So, I was gonna, uh, say, I think when we start to cross, shouldn't be, shouldn't be the one week, should be next day, next day, next. And because once you start through the number, at first it's extremely confusing, but once you start figuring out what's going on, it all starts to make sense. And then we could be, that want to help out early on. Department, they be was it helps through, they're all presenting, we're going through. And then as we start moving through apartment, we can skip time for departments in here to participate in this question about their budget. Okay. And that way it gives our chance to participate and it gives those that will help upfront, uh, check out the budget management team, they'll be meeting in line more in the details. The board wouldn't be, or do want them just to.
I, I think board, I think, right, we'd all be here and going through this together because it's, it's critical. Budget is really number one thing before the official hearings, we're coming together.
I would say we're sitting on the ninth, I would say that is starting the discussion in the first round of information for Joe Paul, so extending the dollars reserves or the dollars that we can't, can't use.
I do think it'd be fruitful to have though, uh, a look at for the night, if we have the budget management team to dive in that, or are we even from?
I, I think when you have enough expert here, it's going to, going to help us all. Cause they're going to give a ball, yeah, that's right. Then there's a room or something else. And then we start to understand.
I do point out, in sake of, we have members that have this thing to do. So, you know, if we're spending all day, we're bringing others along, we have clerks, other people do have other things to do. We can't, um, I give, I'm, I'm, we buy input, we buy. But I'm, I'm trying to point out that if we're here all meeting a day, um, we do, but this is again, the most important thing we'd be doing, making sure we have a budget that makes sense. And it's going to give them the time. And, you know, again, in the past, it was a front way. This point forward, get a change away so that this ever to happen is easier to understand.
Is it the list we, most officials have, Joe, you got to need that process with the full board and, um.
It's either be like a team with department, have we talked about meeting more daily and every week to come together or is that, that's what I'm talking about. But I guess the suggestion would be just kind of publicly with the whole board running through all of that.
I, I'm just saying that more, well, we have the understanding we're going to have. And once it starts rolling, be surprised how you're taking understanding of it. And that's where it's going to come together. That's where big number pop out with the contract or seeing that, um, different categories that be moved here to the budget in, you know, somewhere else. We have Joe and Sir Curro, do you want to go first?
You know, um, I actually imagine that the budgeting would, uh, come together once we have, what's the hole, what, you know, what's the hole we're going to fill? Uh, and, um, how to fill that hole? That allows the budgeting to come together, talk about different ideas. And, you know, what if, uh, you know, say for example, we, we differ, um, what, uh, what, you know, X number of hours of, if we ever employee. Uh, need, you know, we get that information and, you know, you know, cut a number, that would, that'd be one adjusted budget. But to actually find that number of what gap is, we're going to have to first lean through the, these budgets. And, um, and I, you know, pretty much that's what budgeting does is, you know, department heads come and say, hey, uh, this is my, just ask for this. Why are you asking twenty-three percent more? Here's what you done last year. Here's, you know, here's your ask this year. Uh, well, here's a line item of, of budget. Why need then this line act?
There's just an account on it's. Been going, too far, girl.
Um, my recommendation would be stay our fine in on ninth. My recommendation would be to form this budget management team with pressure, assess, or DA and the ad hoc and the budget officer. Uh, be able to go through and up with how options could be presented and what those could look like. And then based on that, that team determines when the hearing would best start. And start going back the old way it used to be, where departments came up and showed their, their budgets to their budgets and what they're asking for and what differences are. And how they are actually contributing to being in their loss to be able to go each department's give. And that's then it's board and we make determinations of which path we want to go. I really think the budget team, uh, there's a lot that needs to be done. I think the budget team needs time with outside consultant to be able to bring that information. He was in a very predictive manner.
Agreed. The point is not to discuss further reductions because we don't even believe that the currency is certain appropriate. It's to identify the features that is causing this, that seems completely irrational because nobody explained why the budget is increasing this in this amount at this point.
So to that, this, the next report, you'll begin those foot tables, you're getting to be looking at, uh, to identify by budget or those, uh, increases are.
So if they, if we inquiry budgeting, we inquiry suggestion from President Volzke about how communicate with department head, once we have a firm handle on where we're actually at. If we are moving, we would be moving forward with June ninth, uh, me, but it would be for the presentation for not to, um, hold a public hearing, be scheduling a special being this week to be scheduled. The public hearing should be short.
And I wanted to raise the word that bar dines to get public, we noticed paper. Uh, our line for paper, get it, and next Friday is this Friday. And our window is, is closing, closing.
June to open, um, budget hearing, we would just know what needs to be published and, um, would need to move forward.
So that need to be published this Friday.
So we have a special meeting for.
Would have had gone to the papers last day, it's a week.
Could we publish June date, just tens early and we just.
We had gotten the papers the week before.
With authorization. Okay. Um, we need to fix this. So, um, where are the, we need to do that out.
Well, I, I, wait, sorry. I think the council, we still have the public hearing until it's not beneath.
Take action.
We continue.
Yeah. So we don't need to cancel necessarily. We kind of it's like a show, we can do it and we have it and take action and continue. If we, if we are able to get in time, cancel.
You have to put here on the ninth, um, maybe just notice that, so you have to take, if there's public at one percent, you will hit that. Then you just can use them in front of public ring.
We'd recommend that, is that keep public ring here, what we are able to get from, uh, the outcome group and then continue to a future eight.
Okay. Um, so we have the, like special meeting, we need, so we need to, we don't need a special meeting then, take that. Have the budget management team, I would just, I know there's some disagreement of opinions, but I, I think it would beneficially have, uh, the special executive advisor was the CEO for ten years. Be a resource in this process. And, um, I don't know why that would hurt. If somebody's been involved with this, helps with these anomaly, I would recommend that we forward with that. And if a former budget officer who helped it together prior budget available, um, willing, I certainly, again, they aren't breakers, but I just think. Her issues are, we just want to just figure out, just spotting anomalies, all we're going to do. It's not, not talking policy. We're talking, um, change, just need spot model and go from there. That's all this is. Um, and it goes to.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not. Um, I would just say, I mean, we've got a new C A that's going to start on June sixteenth, but I'd just rather that's in part, some of these discussions. And moving forward rather looking back, I understand the history is important, but I really feel like we've got to forward and it's time for us to kind of move forward. I, I would rather yes, include the new C A O than go backwards.
You see, it's until sixteen, so there we are, control, you, Super Curro.
I would just say that this budget team should be moving forward with information that's provided by our consultant or our budget. Um, efforts are coming on with commendations. And if the budget team feel information is needed for historic purposes, those who could resource, but not they are here making recommendations. I think it's, but that's where.
I, but again, I'm not asking anyone to make recommendations, it's to have more brains than eyes in the room and have two people that have been involved with very budget that we're dealing. And, uh, one of them is being, is substantial money to us and would suggest that we use that resource. At least offer to be an eye and ear in the room. That was, we have to say, they just, I don't see why we wouldn't have involved. There's no commendations involved. They're not king plus he, they're not giving directions. It's really just some form pay, but I, I, I'm, I'm.
The, the consultants are only working off of the numbers that are, are being provided by the department here to do this. They're, you know, they're, they don't have any additional information.
I, I do want to clarify, our working with department heads, um, to get information also, um, I noted them with the, and met day with our, uh, probation team and Lorraine's who that on. So they are being, they're very informed from me that we're providing and asking questions. So they are doing an analysis. And they do our information. They are meeting closely with the team and that information. So I did declare that.
Yes, that's good.
Yeah. I'll say real quickly, I do for, just because we're with the budget management, I support you right as well.
We need seventy-third. I don't, I respect everyone, have difference of opinion. Um, it's like there's a consensus for our budget management team, I think that's clear. Um, it sounds like there's disagreement on who to involve. We may go off and says, county consular need to backload on who on the team.
Pocket the team, yes, after all.
So first, I'll also demand a team to help identify the problems occurring in budget.
Move.
First, second, second, twelve, please.
Supervisor Kazmi, supervisor Anger, supervisor Tello.
Yes.
Supervisor Zero.
Yes.
Supervisor Laszlo.
Yes.
Five, oh.
Then, uh, entertain motion to pass that, uh, the budget management team, we made a, the auditor, his, uh, staff, the, uh, Thirson Willing, the assessor, the Jerthel. Um, budget ad hoc, special executive advisor, Vaspins up and, uh, former bio officer Mona, if, if available and willing.
Just stay.
Second, all Zebra recall, please.
Supervisor Kazmi.
Yes.
Supervisor Zing.
Yes.
Supervisor Tello.
No.
Supervisor Curro.
No.
Supervisor Laszlo.
Yes.
Three, two, oh.
Okay. And then, um, we need a motion to specify, I think there's consensus on the emotional part to, um, Joe Paul work on parent third data, uh, as described by Joe, by Joe Gonzalez. To provide to the board, like all members to provide with, um, the full plethora of data we can.
That can be, that, right, stuff.
Okay. And it sounds like we have consent on that. Um, was there any missed, because we, because we're just telling.
Well, just, I don't know that I was inappropriate, but I feel probably better while we're on time. I would say with, with these board meetings and these items, um, to get this. Well, just, I don't know that was an appropriate, but I feel probably better while we're on time, I would say with, with these board meetings and these items, um, took it as topic, um, and even bottom, but one A and two A, uh, not enough included, I feel, in the, and I am transmittal, I didn't know exactly where going be discussing, and I guess I would add in the future, it would be really help, I know you had some recommendations to, under recommendation, under the background, under the title, everything was discussed, budget management and demands, asked to, uh, budget management, direction desire. I don't know, ad hoc guys I'm working on, you probably know exactly your, what you have in mind when you're creating these items, as our board, as, you know, members of the board, more time, when create these items, we know a little more what's the act of us, um, and will be included, and so, it, it, not saying it as criticism, but really more is, um, like, how can we kind of do better? And I, I just wanted to make that point, that I didn't really know, I mean, okay, we're gonna talk budget management and demands, all the stuff has, you know, in a bit, got it since first day afternoon, and so, it not very clear to me, and appreciate, I reached out to, I appreciate that, um, I kind of always hide think about, how does this feel or look to the blick, I think, oh, thank you letting me, no, uh, but really important, we make things crystal clear for, I think, public and for all of employees and as well us up here, exactly what these kind of items are going to be, so, thank you.
To prestat, I didn't, can just say this was something that came up Friday after all the concerns that were expressed, in fact, it was made in the day Friday, I know all give us when event Friday, they'd committed speak at, um, person I could cancel then done a staff report, but, um, I spoke with Dave and asked him, I told him exactly what he had, the ad hoc working for and did, and to David to, um, put together general staff report, and pointing that this happened early Friday, you have staff that have to build these, as we expect to come in a week and to put it in, I would have been fine, uh, I written reports, you know, I would have found spending Saturday or Monday, I just want to have to work, so that's Sunday, the other thing, I did call you, you even left a voicemail, I did not call back, asked, told you specifically, I'm here, you have any questions on the agenda, and what the expectation is for the Monday, please call me, but if you would like, you do not, um, and did read out all the department head over the weekend and explained detail the expectation was for the meeting.
I have that, I think we do a better moving to the future, wanting.
Okay, then, uh, do we want to discuss anything further on what brought up regarding, um, late notice and open mission, are you ready adjourned or something? So you're, you're, you're dividing without, uh, any, uh, hesitation that, uh, need discussion about sporadic potential rescinding layoffs is, or gene direction prior to running the board have an inclusion, and supervisor Velasquez, you-
Ask, again, I, I, Mike, I don't see as being properly done, so I don't know how even active it is, it's been that, I'll-
I'm sorry, I'm-
The left notices, because board took action on that.
Yeah, well, that question, the question's really the union part, because it's another, so, and the reason I wanted our question is because the one that tells me that hurts is-
Okay, gold brick.
And I hate super difficult, this is kind of what was trying to drive that, which just, um, supervisor Velasquez's questions went started beaking, your policy, layoff policy states, board of supervisors, administrative officer, shall determine class and number of positions to effect within the community stress, and shall notify if department head in writing layoffs. For example, in my department, I receive no in writing notification from the administrative author of those layoffs, I have provided the layoffs, I do not tend to provide layoffs, I do not leave, have the authority, except upon have at board of supervisors meet on Thursday to issue that layoff, I believe that that be bound violation to issue or act, because I don't have any voted on, that's what I believe you have all or less communicated, I am asking clarification, one, I believe my research that left themselves are top subject closed session, that because of a pure management rights power of the supervisors, now, you can have closed session discussion, running your impacts of layoffs with unions, you can have closed session discussions of annuity laws through, give, so pen those are things, but layoffs themselves are the object of open session, as they are pure and it's right, now perhaps council will have a different opinion on that, but a big issue is it relates to what I have done, I don't know other department heads have done, I not lead, they often notice that provided to department head, not your administrative officer, not your interim administrative officer, but merely by believing in your agent, did not meet qualification of your policy and our rate, so this the way I am treating them, if want to add of them, my request that you are voter, that they were not, I think that clarity is necessary for the, like, given not, by Thursday, and was not present before the board, which was recommended that included deleted additions, I'm sorry I'm being difficult, I'm trying to, and perhaps, to apprentice with different position what I'm saying, but I think clarity helpful, everyone public.
I can imagine that I'd ever agree with this district attorney, but, the, if I can-
Yes.
Um, first need to clarify that what was, since I've talked to you, I've told this to England board members, that they weren't left notices, were proposed layoffs, to end of the hearing, that modify unions that are maybe layoffs discussed on the night, that's a fine distinction I know, but that's my clarification, district attorney is correct, layoffs budget issue, budget is a puck, and they need to discuss in a puck, and the impact of those, oh, unions, need to discuss the unions, they need to be consulted, and, um, how we're with unions, I need to get in session.
Since this agenda, my comment should certainly come up, we'll have a, uh, would be that I expect to be a short conversation, and everybody hold time, we would bow out and pour discuss, yes, it's not a fair conversation, I would expect to base that I'm here, now, um, and if there's nothing further, board, but he-
Mr. Chair, could you just ask, we can add anything to I, agenda item, the end for this being about rescinding, because it wouldn't agenda, so rescind would have to happen in future, and, uh, would be able to be added to public hearing as an item for rescinding the public hearing on 9th, okay, he said, of course, that the conversation had happened.
I'm, we would be going to session, having this question for him.
Well, I don't think discussion is about layoffs, I think discussion for closed session is about the unions.
Ideas that can make clear, we're getting a session.
So let's do the session and we-
Hey, if you want to type for a minute, we'll have a brief conversation, that's what the calls advise, they'll come back, but before then, a poll comment.
Denise Keenan, Chinon Stewart, um, county for I U 2 1, because you have those notice A proposed, have tried meeting for, that is scheduled tentatively tomorrow, where people who work county or on the beginning will be meeting with Downey to discuss impact of something that the board does not even agree should have happened. Well, rightful to do is rescind those notices, and if it comes to a point where it is directed, that board has to take, reach you in the future, thank you.
Thank you, you think there?
I'm sorry, more things, sorry, um, so we invited the closed session, because the session, and I am alluding to that, that you're discussing employerization units, not, again, maybe to Ms. Hello comments, that's not very clear, I've probably had five, 10 calls over weekend, or members negotiate, so if that can be clarified, this is not bargaining negotiations with the individual units.
The chairman misses the guise, this brown, I think, which now, all units are normal, um, sub term, where you negotiations, you're, when, when, when you first, if you're going to about all unit instead of senior or a couple units, you think that is all units.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, I press concern about the concerns that were over here, wanted that be part of me and our council, he, our team, and he's, you know, legal terminated as such, so, um, anything for her, we'll adjourn closer, we'll be back shortly, thank you.
Supervisor, are we, can, uh, so are we taking the cover this session?
Like I already did that, yeah, oh.
Two ones as well.
Okay, yeah, sorry, uh.
Even in three minutes.
Thank you, Angela, so, um, is everything very clear, from listening to this training, but now that has occurred, I've listened, uh, and spoken to many folks over the weekend, I've asked the chair, uh, by two, I mean, council, because it's occurred before, where you add a certain item, and that, because you have discovered it and feel that it is a mercy, would it not fall under that classification or understanding that what occurred must be dealt with as a mercy, because that, that notice done has completely started whole cluster within every department in San Diego County, so I do feel that there is a way, uh, that it be justified, uh, Mr. Chair, please, uh, thank you.
I'll give the receipt, council.
If you have the energy, I'd, I'd really like to get in close and then we can mount, maybe I propose.
Oh, adjourned, oh, oh, sorry, oh, sorry, for the reminder.
Please stay in for the ready a minute.
Uh, there, Bernard, uh, again, um, I'm not coordinating, I always believe this or Ms. Tell, but, uh, my comments are gonna be similar, I very confused to precisely what you're going into to discuss, and my request is that you clarify that, and then when you come out, will avoid the mistake that happened to the last meeting, that would end with more unknown apps that you normally would, exactly what came out of closed session, just not you read the public address, but you are close supervisors, everybody's on the same page, so that, um, notices whether they're valid or not, don't get accidentally set out by the legislature or, or, uh, did it, and I think this is a scheme of one, because you have a really smart people, um, that were speaking today, and highly educated, agreed, years of experience, and they interpreted what came out of the last, or what was said to them, was actual law notice, and I want to play, there's anybody like that, or either, uh, county council or supervisor, well, that wasn't what they really were, and all these very, very educated, reliable, misincentive, what was sent them, so my request is very oddity, you can go discuss a lot of dirty mail, thank you very much.
And for Cardi, I went in, went into the council, asked him what to discuss, and the idea to discuss was in direction of concerns that were being spread regarding, um, notice you, that's, anything for her?
I see no other comments.
Well, and we'll be shortly, thank you. So.